Yes.
Commissioner Teller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Next on the end is the employment agreement for the assistant analyst director, which is a contract.
Make a motion to approve the contract for the assistant analyst director.
Sir. Commissioner Feller?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Teller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes, sir.
Are there any committee reports? Oh wait, that's not one.
Nothing really to report out at the beginning of another month. State's still sending our money. We're at the old surcharge amount still. We probably see the new full September. Hopefully we'll have to, it'll come through.
Do you think they pay on that or is it effective?
Well, they're just that far behind on sending our check. We get a check every month. They never miss a month sending it. They're just that far behind on actually, on the redents.
Okay.
But I did have a contract, or a question on the contracts and the memorandum of understanding. When I was hired, the 9-1-1 board was advised to do a memorandum because that was what the county was going to across the board for everybody that all administrative positions would be at will employees. So has that changed now?
What do you have now?
A memorandum.
Okay.
Because that's what the 9-1-1 board was advised to do.
Well, because I talked to Steve and Steve told me that he thought you had a contract.
Memorandum.
Okay. All right, and I'll, okay.
No, that's, I mean, that's up to your 9-1-1 board.
Well, but they were advised from the county and that this was where they needed to go to be uniform across the board.
If I can just clarify, the county did take the position that all administrative employees would be at-will employees. Apparently that's not the case anymore, but that's between, that's between you all. But that is the direction that the board gave to the 9-1-1 board.
Okay.
Just so the record's clear.
I didn't see that direction. In case you're wondering.
I think that was before Angie was here.
No, that was her. But it didn't come from me.
Like, what was the timeline on that? If anybody remembers? When was that advisory given?
May of 2017.
Tyler, from a legal standpoint, was that your perspective as what you suggested to the board for them to do that?
I don't make substantive recommendations regarding policy decisions, but I was asked by the board how those should be handled and I explained to the board the pros and cons of an at-will employment arrangement versus a cause standard in a contract. And the board, I don't know if they ever made a vote on it, but that was the direction that the board took. It makes no difference to me.
Less than anything.
My substantive concern is with consistency, which is not what I'm seeing, but that's a different matter.
That, that's not true. Maybe with the direction of the board, but the consist, the consistency of the four employees that we have now that's under a contract and adding the two. And I, and I know what you're saying about consistency.
I'm not sure that you do know what I'm saying, but you go, go right ahead, maybe you do.
Well, no, I'm talking about from, you're talking about from the direction prior.
Yes.
That that, yeah. And I get that. And I understand that. I'm just looking at it as a whole that we have six employees that we're talking about and four of them are now under contract. And we should go, I agree, one way or the other, to be consistent in what we're doing. Now, and I understand you're talking about consistent with the direction that was given. True? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah, sort of.
Okay. And I'm, I'm just, I'm saying that the consistency of what we have on the table, that we had four of the six, but that's also water and bridge now, so.
It's your prerogative. You have your employment arrangement.
So what changed your decision to do this then in less than 10 months? So I mean, if this is what you guys voted on in April of 17.
It wasn't voted, it wasn't voted.
Okay, but you guys.
And I don't know who advised 9-1-1. I didn't. She didn't. So I, I don't know where that came from.
I don't know. That was on Steve's.
But he's saying that you guys had had the discussion and he had given you the pros and cons of each back in April of 17. Well, we're just now in February of 18 and now all of a sudden there's a big change on it. So that's where I'm confused, if that's what was discussed and you guys asked for the recommendation back in April. So why I always didn't change 10 months later?
I'm just wanting to be consistent in what we do as the employees that work for the board.
But they were working here in April though, last year.
And they were under contract.
But how come on the FOIA request, there was no contracts and no memos that were produced and I have the response?
Oh, I have, I have no idea.
It was sent by Dennis Mays from Raleigh and they said there was no memos and no contracts nor agreements.
On these?
Uh, yes, that is correct. On Angel Kupin, Angel Kupin.
No, 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 I'm not, yeah, we didn't have those. What I'm talking about is the four employees that we have now, that, that prior to these two, the four that we have were under contract, which was Tammy, Kevin, Jamie, and Grant.
But didn't you say they were under memos though?
No, those are under contract.
No, the two. They're not under memos?
There are.
And what you said is inaccurate. It was, the memos were provided to Dennis Mays. Yes, they were.
No, they weren't.
Yes, they were. I have a copy of the response from the FOIA request and they were provided to Dennis Mays.
It was the website that was copied and pasted as far as the salaries. That's what was provided to him.
And, and the memos? You want to pull it up, Tyler?
I'm looking for it, but I'll find it.
Well, to follow up for my question, why are some employees given protection on what their raises would be and some are not?
I can't speak for anybody else. My desire would be to put everybody on a contract basis because I feel like it's clear and it provides more security for the employees. We attract better people that way. That's my opinion. And I wasn't on the board the last time that decision was made, so if that's a swing vote, I don't know.
No, and, and I agree with that and, and I was under the impression that you did have a contract.
No.
And, and again, that, that's up to the 9-1-1 board, but I take it your memorandums for a year? Then.
With no raises negotiated into it and no protection?
And that needs.
They can come in today and fire you.
And that needs to be discussed with the 9-1-1 board the next time. That's up to them.
Can you enter a contract at any time? Like, could that be ready now or do you have to wait for your memos? It doesn't have a date, so. And I'm just saying.
And that's why I'm not a fan of memos, by the way, because it, it's too, it makes the employees too vulnerable to realize it gives us the flexibility to do things that we want to do, but I don't think you attract top talent that way. And the county needs to be about that, so I, I can't speak for anybody else, but that's, that's just my opinion.
I mean, memos favor us. And that's what Tyler indicated. My original thought to that was, well, I agree with that, but the more I looked at it and understood that, you know, am I going to go to Grant and say, you're not getting the contract anymore, we're going to change you to a memo? Well, he'd go straight through the roof, I think. I don't know that for a fact because I haven't asked him.
Then why not give everybody contracts so everyone's the same? We're back to some employees being treated one way, some employees being treated another.
That's what we're group doing.
But don't you have the four that's one and two that's another?
No, no. We just changed.
We just voted all.
Who are the other two?
Chris, two aren't expired as well. They're contracts, but they're not.
And they have contracts. Grant, Kevin, and Tammy.
That's what we're doing.
And they're, and they're under contract, correct?
Yes. Tammy's just isn't up until, I think, next year.
If we go back in the minutes, there was a motion made to approve an employment agreement is what the word was said for the motion. For both the administrator and the human resource, not a contract.
Okay.
The wording for the analyst director and the assistant's contract was, was the wording.
They're all called employment agreements? That's what they are.
I'm just saying those were the words that were used during, during the meeting.
The motion needs to be the item that's on the agenda, so we need to, it is important what the verbiage is on the agenda and it's important that the motions reflect the verbiage on the agenda. I think it's all legally sufficient, but we, we need to be mindful of that.
Did they all say employment agreement?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying there?
Yeah, on the agenda, they all say employment agreement, but in the minutes when the motion was made, for the first one for the county administrator, the words employment agreement were used to approve the appointment, employment agreement for human resource position, employment agreement was used in the motion. For the analyst director and assistant analyst director, contract was used in both of those.
So do they need to redo the, the analyst people to say agreement instead of contract?
It's fine. It's fine. You have the document. It's only agenda. It's fine.
Yeah.
Is there any other business?
No, you were talking about committees. I did talk to Dirk about the cat. And the cat has been adopted, but he said that he did get it signed that anything that happened because of the focus shoot and all the publicity that would come from that, the county would be entitled to, even though the cat now is adopted. So. That came up in question to me and so I called Dirk and found out. Angie, that's what you heard, right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what that is and how much and when it's going to happen, if it happens, I don't know. I don't think that it's going to be the same here as the county anyway, so. But it might be a little bit running.
Yeah. Scott, you've talked about the evacuation plan.
Yes, I think we need to sit down and talk as a group about that and formulate something. I think that, you know, there's been some discussion about active shooter intruder in the building training. We need to do that. I know I've spoken about that once before. We just need to probably formalize a training date for entire staff here. I think under a motion we're required to do that, so, you know, it's something that I wanted to do earlier, like, it's something we haven't done, but we need to do that and we need to work our evacuation plan. I don't even know if there's an updated evacuation plan here for the courthouse.
When I very first took this position, that was one of the first things that I asked is if we have an evacuation plan. I've never been able to get my hands on one.
I've got some models downstairs that we've been working on. We need something for fire and some for bomb hazards material and of course active shooter. We need to cover those areas for sure and anything else that you can think of that we need to cover, but I think that's probably the most important ones.
How long is the training that, I mean, what you would perform?
We wouldn't do the scenario based thing. I don't know that there's a need to do that, but we did a presentation, probably about 45 minutes to an hour.
Could we do it in, twice in one day so we can do like half employees and another half? I just don't know for, if we want to train everybody, I don't want to pull off.
I have to do that for the school.
Okay.
Because what, what we do is we come in and do the presentation, then we come back because they're limited on the amount of time, because it's about a four hour block to do the scenarios. If you want the scenario training, we do it.
What, what does that entail?
Basically, we're having an active exercise where an intruder comes into the building and what do you do? Do you evacuate? Do you hide? Do you lock down? Do you fight? What do you do?
It's got along with it. Something we talked about several meetings ago is accountability of who holds in the building at one time, because right now.
Well, that's another thing, because we need to talk about rounding points once they evacuate, where we're going to go, because the office holders of departments are responsible for those people. So when we come in to respond to a situation like that, we need to know who's still in the building and who's not.
Absolutely. Because right, because right now, you take right now, we, we don't know who holds in this building, correct?
Right, exactly.
Yeah. And, and we talked about that and shame on me, I'll take responsibility for that for not acting upon it or even, you know, talking with you about it, but, but I mean, it's right now in the court, especially on court day, we have no idea who or how many we have in this building.
Right. So, knowing you're not going to know everybody, because there's people that show up here that's not even on the court document that show up for court, so you're not going to.
No way.
But from an employee's standpoint, we, we need to have a comprehensive plan where whoever's in charge of that office, even if something, God forbid something happens to that office holder, who else is going to be there to?
Very good.
So we need, we need to sit down and talk about those things.
Very good.
Willing to do it. Love to do it.
Very good. Grant, do you have anything?
I was going to let the board know that we have the new unit parked outside. Everything's on board. We passed all the inspections with flying colors. We're waiting on one little widget in Springfield that I was made aware of after the inspection, so we overnighted the funds. Angie helped make sure that that check got cut immediately that morning, so we're waiting for them to turn that one piece of paper back around to us and it will be on the road. So after the meeting, if anybody from the public or the board would like to see the unit, right before it goes into service, it's parked outside.
Angela?
Bobby, the other thing, I want to bring up, the board's aware that we've lost four patrol guys to our unit, one through retirement three, taking other positions, so we're crippled right now. We will be at the end of this month because the last two will be leaving them this month. I've replaced two of those positions, but I've had a very, very difficult time finding candidates for the job. Mayor Gordon Jimm's back here. He's worked with me on getting the board together so we can try to push this through and find qualified candidates, but you know, if we don't, then we're going to have to send them to the academy. That's another issue. All the academies are full. So it's a 14 week academy, so we're going to be, we're going to be hurting if I, if I can't find somebody that's ready and trained to go to work, so.
These two were ready, right?
No, one of them is, he has to go, he was a part-time certified, which means he has to go through a transition course, so he'll go, he'll do that in March. It's, it's an ADR course. It's two weeks. The other, last one I hired is not, he'll have to go to the academy. I spent the afternoon on the phone Wednesday trying to get him in the academy. I think maybe I can get him in in April. He'll have to go to Decatur to do a training facility. The other two, I don't know. Just to give you an idea of what, what I'm going through, we sent out applications to reply. We had 60 responses. I split the testing up into two, two different testings. I have one earlier this month and, and the end of January, and I have another one at the end of this month. But I had 60 apply. I broke it up into, I sent out 28 invitations for the first testing. Seventeen replied to that. Twelve showed up. Five passed. And then we did the power test sat last Saturday. We said we have to do the power test. Two passed it. Only two showed up for that. So that's what I'm up against and.
Oh my gosh.
And so I've got, I think, 12 on the list out of the last remaining, which would have been about 30 people that were, that had applied, so, so I'm having a difficult time. I've talked to others, sheriffs and chiefs and the state police. Enrollment's way down. Nobody seems to want the job anymore. And we've got other issues too with that. There's other, you know, I'm going to be quite frank. I mean, I had one of them that I could have had, but he didn't choose it because our insurance is horrible when it comes to the family plan. You know, the city offers a good, good family plan, so I lost him because of that. And he was trained and ready to go. So I've got a big challenge, guys, so I don't know what's going to happen.
I don't, I think he's going to get to go over there.
Yeah, I don't know if they're going to hire or not. I'm not sure. But I mean, that's what he decided, that's what he told me. He had the opportunity, that's where he was going to go, so I talked to him earlier this week, so, you know. Our, my mission is to try to find somebody that's fully certified and ready to go to work and they go through, you know, our training program and we cut them loose, but if, if I have to send three people to training this year, I'll be out this whole entire year rebuilding. That's my spiel.
Tiffany? Tiffany, hi. Do you have a break there? If it's all right with, with you guys, I'd kind of like to have a meeting on the union negotiations. Not right now, but we'd need to go into executive session if you can do that.
Do we need to public comments first?
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. Are there any public comments? Yes.
Bobby, regarding those figures that I emailed to you.
Yes.
Most of those things we already knew just from personal knowledge, people we talked to in the other counties and in the schools, how they handle their IT positions. So when Mr. Fowler's wanted it, you know, made public, I did send FOIA requests on all of those to get it, to make it legal and to get the specific amount. And I sent them to the schools, as you know, from the memo also, because they have comparable needs in the schools now with all their computer programs, but I guess Mr. Hawke had also sent FOIAs to all these counties, because when my responses were someone else in Union County is, is interested in this too, so, so maybe that information is already available to you, but.
Not to the extent that you're in the country.
Okay.
And I shared it with Alex before the meeting and I'll share it with the rest of them.
Right.
I think for the most part we're in agreement that Robbie's position was, it was probably misclassified in some ways, that we, from the budget looked as if we were spending $70,000 with total benefits for IT, when in fact it was probably much less than that from the job duties that he gave us, that he was conducting. So we need to fix that regardless, because there's no, I don't think there's a reason that the county should be paying that much for specific IT work, because he did FOIA and he did some other administrative things that fell outside the parameters of IT. So I think that, I think we're all in agreement on at least reclassifying that in the future, no matter which path we take. But I agree with some of the numbers that were given. I think that's appropriate.
Because many of the counties, you know, those, those duties are elsewhere, those, those other duties. For example, most, and I would say, I haven't asked them, but I would say most office holders here would rather be the spokesperson for their department as opposed to having a spokesperson, those sort of things. And some counties don't have county managers. There's all kinds of issues there where the, the duties go elsewhere, but most of the places, if, and as you can see for the IT person, it is much less, but as you say, there were other duties included in that, so. But anyhow, I just want you to know, it had been, apparently he requested FOIAs also from the county, so I don't know, but.
Yes.
So are the two Angies now under contract instead of at-will employees?
Yes, they are.
I have a question, Rob.
Yes, Scott.
This is my decision. I wish, I wish the board would reconsider individualizing the IT for, per office. I, you know, I just feel like that, nothing against Raleigh, but I mean, he had the whole building and when we needed somebody, we, you know, we did it really, really cheap. We shared it with 9-1-1 and I think between the two departments, back before Raleigh come on board, we were doing it for $2,500 to $3,000 a year and all of our IT needs were being met. And I wish that maybe that would be a consideration, that you as a board just turn it back over to the office holders and allow them to, to address that and maybe put that in a contract and let them, you know, bid that out to whoever in the community that, that can, can perform it for, for this specific office, because, you know, we probably had some of the most technical stuff in the whole courthouse and, you know, we, we were doing that with a gentleman that was very good and could keep our demands and requests up and run really efficiently. So I would ask the board to at least consider that and think about that, because it worked. And I think we didn't spend a lot of money. I mean, you, you think about that in terms of the dollars that's spent here, $2,500 and half of that was, you know, spent from 9-1-1 and so the sheriff's office was spending about $1,500 a year. So, and there's some great people out there. We, I mean, we had one of the best one ever before Raleigh come, come along. I mean, that guy was great. I hated losing him.
That's, that's definitely a consideration. And of course the circuit clerk gets part of theirs done through the first circuit.
The admin office in Shawnee, so we don't pay anything for, you know, so Raleigh did nothing as far as to, with our computers or any of our maintenance, so he would maintain our phone lines, obviously, because it's through the courthouse, but even the circuit clerk is not subject to FOIA under my statute either, so there was no FOIA request as far as that. I have a template letter that's approved through Supreme Court that I would send back to Raleigh. So, well, my computer maintenance is covered under the Supreme Court with the admin office.
Yeah, I think the system where we may pay a contractor or retainer to lower the hourly rate for departments and then just allocate the funds at need, it makes more sense than they have to pay before. Right. But if the market doesn't need it, their budget doesn't get good, you know.
How are you going to decide how much money each office gets for IT if you do that?
Good question.
Because you seem to be having a lot of trouble with this budget deciding how much people are getting, so how are we going to throw that into the mix? Which I have some other questions on that, but I just throw that out since that's germane to this conversation.
I'm curious if Darren and I then could have a funding look in that instance, because we'd be prepaying services, get a little rate, and how is that, how's that allocated? It's a good logistic question. I don't know.
Did Raleigh keep a log on what he actually did, you know, on his first computer IT work? And I don't think that he did that.
Not that I know of. You mean like his time that he spent in each office?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's been a senior. I don't know.
But I hope that those same, I would hope that those same companies that, that you liked and everything was bid when we put the RFP out to do IT for everyone, if that's starting to go for everyone, those good companies.
I don't know that that would happen to the guy that we were using, because he has a full-time job. He, he works at Shawnee College. He's very good at what he does and he, he did that for us to some kind of a side work.
Part-time.
Part-time thing, but I mean, he was able to be very efficient and was able to do what we needed him to do. I don't know that we ever really had a delay in things that when we were down or whatever we needed, he could accommodate us, so, I mean.
We had the same type of arrangement in our office as well. We had a person who had a full-time job, did that stuff on the side, always, I mean.
Responsive though.
Lickety-split when we needed something, low, 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 low cost, someone you could trust. I mean. But I get the budget situation. How do you allocate that line?
I have some other concerns. If we have four or five different IT providers, there are a number of legal compliance issues that we have to deal with and it's not, it just complicates things a little bit from my perspective, but.
Well, I think this is all food for thought. I mean, obviously we're going to send the RFP out and see what kind of response we get and.
Don't we need to know what we're asking for in RFP though, before we send out an RFP?
Well, I think Angie is working on that, or is not?
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to gather that information as, if that's the direction you guys are still going to go ahead and get a vote for everybody. Because that's what it, what it is. It has, has everybody, including 9-1-1, so.
Tyler, what's your concern about the legal aspect? Do you mean just?
Well, there are a number of issues. There are FOIA issues, there are HIPAA issues, there are security issues, there are any number of issues and frankly, it's very hard to keep everybody in the county going in the same direction.
Do you think we're secure now?
Well, that's, I don't know that I can really answer that question.
I can.
But I think, I have some concerns. I mean, it's not my decision. I just think that's.
I know, but I just want to point that out, Tim.
Now, we have a contract, like HIPAA law states, if you have a business agreement with anyone, that's a building vendor.[1729.81] We even had our pest control people sign one, because they're in our building.
Mm-hmm.
For privacy. If you have access to any portion of a business, you have to sign a HIPAA business agreement. Not saying that that will fix everything, but I'm saying that could be an option, that you can have a contract to where someone agrees that if they come across any type of protected information, that they're in agreement that that's, you know, that's non-disclosure.
I agree with that. My concern is, if you have six vendors, then you have to do that with six vendors, and you have to make sure six vendors are doing everything correctly. I'm talking from the county's perspective as an entity, which is, I think that can complicate things. I'm sure it can be managed.
We're having access that they would have to our systems too. It's much easier with one vendor than six.
And I agree with that.
And when they're doing it, it's-
This is like the whole phone issue. That was something that we always handled in house for our own age, and see, we managed all our cell phones and things like that. Now, you know, we don't, so... It doesn't make me any difference either way, but that was just one more duty given to somebody else that we took care of in the past.
Well, from a 911 perspective, in July, Raleigh suggested to the 911 board that we needed to replace three computers that were twelve years old. Two of those three computers are still sitting in a box in my office today. And he told the board how unsecure the computers were. They were not being supported anymore, because they're running XP. It was such an emergency, we bought them a year, and they're still sitting in a box. I have a switch down there that's in a box that failed in October. So if we had someone that worked for our offices, maybe we could actually get our equipment up and going and keep it that way.
I would like to add on that point. Aside from this discussion, my main concern from my office perspective on this IT situation is I have to have someone available at all times, and that is because our office, I mean, it's not to the degree of the sheriff's office in terms of, but we are using our IT in court and all, and, I mean, that's how our office functions. We have a paperless office, so it is very important, whatever is done, that we have somebody that's available almost immediately at all times, which I know is a concern downstairs.
I'm just throwing it out to guys. I understand. I understand.
Well, I don't think it's an overarching concern. I just think it's a consideration. My main concern is that, for my office, that it works.
I do.
Sorry, John.
You're fine. You're missing back. You're just scheduled to learn.
As unions here, we're going into contracts, negotiations. You're talking about possible layoffs in this, that's what you said earlier about the budget, but then you changed and made them under contract instead of agreement until we get done with possible layoffs? Is that what I hearing? Okay, with no budget, write down? With possible layoffs in the budget?
Yes.
So how does that justify, I mean, how is that, I mean, because you're saying you want to keep everyone the same across the board, and if you're talking about possible layoffs, which, I mean, as we all know, it's my office and Terry's office, so it's like-
We'll hit one layoff in the state's attorney's office. Also, yes.
Well, they said only two.
Right, well, we already, that went off the board immediately. That was off the table.
Who said only two?
Well, that was in the past, when we were talking on budget making, because that's what was told to us, that there was possible layoffs of possibly two people.
I have never said that. I guess somebody else said it, because there's always been more than two.
But anyway.
Probably union people laid off first.
So we're going to go with laying union people off and keeping the new creative positions in the past few years in, that are employed by the commissioners, and then go and start affecting the union contract. So how is that the same in keeping everyone across the board? When we don't have a budget, so no budget, but go ahead and enter into new agreements, voted on and passed them, but then possible layoffs.
Just so you guys are aware, the county administrator position was created in two thousand and fifteen, or two thousand and thirteen, and the third position in the county clerk's office was created after that, so just so you-
But there has to be substantial raises for both positions this year, so, I mean, that also takes into effect a five thousand dollars, twenty-five hundred for each. So with no budget and entering now into agreements with them, but possible layoffs, I mean, how do you justify that as a whole as a county board? Because our workloads have a decrease. If anything, mine's increased now with e-piling. So with not a decreased workload, I don't know how that's justifiable.
Well, that's why we're going to discuss the budget, I guess, this afternoon.
I also want to make a comment from what Angie said. The third person that was put in my office was not just in my office. There was one put in the treasurer's office and one also put in the assessment office at the same time. So it wasn't just my office that was getting employed, and it was because of contractual obligation. contractual obligation reasons, those employees were put there.
So those were all after the county administrator position was created?
Those were all, that, there was a grievance filed concerning the number of employees in the assessor's office, county clerk's office, and the treasurer's office. And they, I don't know, I could have to go back and look and see what, when that was. I'm just saying it wasn't just the county clerk's office. Those three were done at the same time.
And then at that time, the circuit clerk had the grievance too, because that's when we had a retiree at that time, and then the county come back, and that's when Lorraine won the grievance and got the position, because our contract states seven.
We'll discuss it.
So since it's carryover, I mean, we'll, it'll be brought back at the next meeting, and we'll get answers on it as far as with the budget and the layoffs and-
Well, you know, we're going to discuss it this afternoon. Probably I could get everybody here, so... And it'll be an open session. Do you have other public comments?
Well, I have some questions and concerns about the budget. I'm, it's not clear to me, I mean, one or two and a half months into the fiscal year with no budget. So it leaves the departments and the county as a whole without any plan as to what we're spending. So we might be spending at a deficit level. I don't know, because I have no idea what the budget's going to be for my office or for the county as a whole, which is the number one concern. But I also have some concerns about how are the decisions being made about where the cuts are made as far as staffing? I'm not really sure that there's an objective measure being employed to determine this. And I was asked about a layoff for not filling a position in my office, and what I told the board was, I need the position, but if you can't fund it, you can't fund it. And I think some other departments have not taken that position, and so those are still up for debate. And when I come in and try to be a team player, that's off the table. So I just have some concern that there's not an objec-